Good evening and welcome to our live audience at the Municipal Utilities Building, so all of you that are here, and to our County Commissioner candidates. We are just for District One and District Three. We appreciate the time you take to do this. I am Jan Forkroot. I am the Voter Service Chair with our Willmar Area League of Women Voters. We are not live, and that's been some confusion, but for the primaries, we won't be live. These will be on Rack 181 and 18 in the programming. And there I recorded audibly as well, so that KWLM will have them on demand on their site. So it's what we worked out with Rack 18. We are just, one of just a couple of housekeeping things. The bathrooms are across the hall. We do have notes if the audience has any questions, so just raise your hand and the League of Women Voters will get a card to you. I guess we'll get on with the show then tonight, as far as our forum and hearing more from all of you candidates. So I'd like to introduce our moderator and also our league, local league president, Jan Dahl.
Good evening and welcome. The Willmar Area League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan, nonprofit, political organization with 99 years of history in the state of Minnesota. Tonight, we are pleased to host this primary election forum featuring the candidates for County Commissioner in District One and Three. The top two vote-getters from the primary election will have the opportunity to have their names placed on the general election ballot in November. We have two contested Candy Ojai districts. One is District One, which encompasses the city of Willmar. And those candidates are Dale L. Anderson, George Corky Berg, and Steve Iverson. District Three is the northwest part of Candy Ojai County and also encompasses a smidgen of the city of Willmar. That's what I call it. They may call it something different.
It's bigger than the smidgen.
And those candidates are Dale H. Anderson, Dwayne Holtgren, Raleigh Nissen, and Bruce Shuck. So, welcome. The format tonight will be a two-minute opening statement with a one-minute closing statement. You'll have up to two minutes to answer questions. Due to extenuating circumstances, Corky Berg is unable to be here tonight, and so I will be reading his opening statement and his closing statement. The questions have been sent to our league email site. We collected some at Rockin' Robin's, so that was a good thing. And they also may be submitted by the audience that is present tonight. We have leaguers that have cards that are available, so we will be happy to take those questions as well. So let's begin with opening statements from District One, and alphabetically we'll go, so Dale L.
Well, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and I thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on a forum like this. It's an educational thing for the constituents in District One as well as candidates, so we appreciate it. My name is Dale Anderson, Dale L. Anderson. I've been a resident of Candy Ojai County in Willmar for about 40 years. Went to high school in Litchfield, grew up on a farm south of Litchfield, went to St. Cloud State University, and moved to Willmar back in 1976. I currently, I'm still employed as a customer service manager with AmeriPride Services. I have been with them for about 25 years. And I deal with supervising employees. I have a customer base that I supervise of roughly 1,400 customers and clients, and that ranges from private businesses to major corporations and governmental offices and businesses as such. Negotiating contracts, so on and so forth, with all these different businesses is a big part of my job, and helping them solve solutions or problems with, you know, no matter how big or small they might be. Been married for 35 years to my wife, Ann. We have one son, David, who's 20 years old and lives in the Twin Cities and actually works at Minnesota State Capitol. And two older brothers, Fred Anderson and my brother Bob Anderson, who lives in Rosemont. Fred is a Willmar native as well. And again, I'm looking forward to the upcoming primary and the election, and I look for, really, I'm excited about the opportunity to serve the people of District One.
Great. Thanks, Dale. So the next one would be Corky Berg, and I will go ahead and read that. "I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to share some information about myself. I also would like to thank the viewers who are so civic-minded, and my opponents who have stepped up to run for this office. I regret that I have a commitment I made last fall, and that I can't personally attend this forum to answer your questions and provide an opportunity for you to know me better. I am running for Commissioner because I had worked closely with Candy Ojai County Board of Commissioners for several years as the supervisor and director of Candy Ojai County Family Services. I have always admired how well the Commissioners worked together and got things done for Candy Ojai County in an efficient and effective way. I have been interested in this position for several years, and I hope to serve our community in this capacity. County Commissioners have a huge responsibility to provide oversight of hundreds of services. It is important to provide good services in a cost-effective way. Foremost is the responsibility to minimize taxpayer dollars and to find the most effective way to fund and provide the needed quality services. I have those qualifications and would work hard to meet the needs of our community and keep Candy Ojai County a good place to work and live. I would like to list some of the things to help you know me better. I am married to Ramona Berg Perry, a retired Jefferson teacher. I'm a member of Bethel Church and serve on the council. I'm a graduate of Mankato State University in the Blandon Leadership Program. I work for Candy Ojai, I worked for Candy Ojai County Family Services for 28 years as the Director, Supervisor, Licensed Social Worker, and now retired. I am proud to say that I have served in the United States Army Reserve for seven years and on the Willmar Fire Department for 13 years. I have been on several boards in our community, including the YMCA, Woodland Centers representing the County Commissioners, and the Barn Theater. I was instrumental in the formation of the 18-County Mental Health Consortium Pact for Families Collaborative." Thank you. And now we will move on to Steve Iverson.
Good evening. I'd like to start out by thanking the League of Women Voters for the invitation to debate tonight. I would also like to thank all of the people that are here and the people that are watching or listening for their time. It's reassuring to know that so many people still believe, as I do, that democracy still works. Like I said, my name is Steve Iverson. Most of my friends and my wonderful wife call me Iver. My mom Fran still calls me Steve, except when she's upset with me, and then she calls me Stephen Lee Iverson. I'm 64 years old, and I've lived in Willmar all but a couple of years of my life. I am married to, like I said, to my wife Peggy for 31 years, and have two amazing children, Carly and Joel, and three terrific grandchildren. I went to high school here in Willmar. I went to the Willmar Junior College and got my Bachelor's in Business Administration from Southwest State. I worked for Stacy Nursery for close to 20 years, and I spent the last 16 years working for the Candy Ojai County Sheriff's Department. I was a correction officer there, and I spent the last year as working security for the Seventh District Court. I retired in May of this year. I'm an avid fisherman. I like to hunt, travel, and to read. People have asked me why I'm running for the County Commissioner. I'm running because I think I have a valid perspective of the needs of the county residents. I'm willing to become familiar with all the issues, get to better know the elected and appointed officials, and cooperate with the media. I have a familiarity with some aspects of politics, budgeting, personal management, communications, and the law. Being retired will allow me the time to attend regular meetings, work sessions, executive sessions, special meetings, public hearings, and official gatherings. While the speakers tonight may have a slightly different view on what they view as problems in the county, and everyone will have an opinion on what the county is doing well, I tend to be a glass-half-full guy, and I'm not afraid to ask them to fill it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Dale H. Anderson. And I should say, representing District Three.
Hi, I'm Dale Anderson. I'd like to thank everybody for coming and participating in the forum, and thank the League of Women Voters for doing this. It's a great chance to learn what the other candidates are thinking and what the public is really looking for. I've been a lifelong person farming up in the northern part of the county. I actually, my, our land butts up against the county line, so we take and really know what the end of the county is all about up in the north part. But I'm married to my wife Deb, and we have three boys, and they all live within three miles of me, so I've been very blessed to have that opportunity to work with my children in my farming and in my life. We have eight grandchildren, and that's been a great honor, too. I have been milking cows and working the farm there for all my life, and we just happened to sell our herd in March of dairy cows, so it gave me the opportunity to do this. A lifelong dream of mine is to be a County Commissioner. When I was younger, I always joked, "Oh, someday I'll run for County Commissioner." So when I got rid of my dairy cows, it gave me the opportunity to have the time to do the job that I feel that the county needs in the time and the commitment that is also needed to be a County Commissioner. I've been a member and on the Board of Directors for Candy Ojai Power Cooperative for 30 years and Chairman there for the last 11 years. And also right now, I'm Vice President of Candy Ojai, of the Great River Energy Board, which is where we get our power from for Candy Ojai Power Cooperative, and that's been a great opportunity. I think that I could support and be a good voice for the citizens of District Three and listen to what they feel is important, and do what is asked of me as a County Commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. Dwayne.
My name is Dwayne Holtgren, and I would thank you for inviting us here tonight, but I'm a little bit nervous, so maybe I'm not so happy I got a chance. I'll get over it quick. I didn't prepare anything in particular. I've been here and gotten to know a lot of the people in my district over these years, and a lot of the people in this district also recognize that we've had a successful and respectable farming operation west of town. I've lived on the same plot of land all of my life, brought my wife from Willmar out there to live with me 46 years ago and raise a family, two sons still on the farm with me. So I retired four years ago and tried to keep it down to about 12 hours a day now. I want to express the idea that, for myself here, I'm not looking for another job in essence. I have plenty of jobs to do. I think a lot of people, a lot of Commissioners, start thinking this is like a career kind of a thing and a job for themselves, instead of looking to do a job. And for myself, I want to do a job to help Candy Ojai County with some of the issues that I think have been, become very obvious in the last 10, 15 years. So I'm ready to go to work. If I could get the nod for the Commissioner job, I think you would find that I'm a very conservative and independently-thinking kind of a person, and I've never been afraid to stand up for what I think is right. A lot of people will agree with me or disagree with me, but that remains to be seen who comes out to be right at the end every time anyhow, so thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Raleigh.
Thank you. Thank the League for having us here tonight. I do have a real reason not to be here. It's my wife and I's 50th wedding anniversary this evening.
Congratulations.
I'm a little conflicted, but I will, I better not waste my two minutes doing that. I came here in 1966 to go to Willmar Community College with a goal of graduating and going on to the St. Paul campus of the university for, with an ag background. I was going to be either a county agent or something to do with agriculture. Well, then I met this young lady, and I've been here ever since. I worked for Trade Home Shoes for 30 years, I believe, as a manager and also as a district supervisor. That gave me training not only in customer service, which was their specialty, but as a supervisor, I evaluated people, I evaluated product, and I evaluated processes. And we made decisions based on those evaluations to make Trade Home a successful company. Why did I decide to run last time? Because I met my wife here, we raised our family here, they were educated here. I was educated here, and I felt I wanted to bring something back, put something back. I believe that I would, I should run for a second term because I now have the skills that I learned over the first four years, and not quite done with that yet. But I learned, I was a leader the last two years, Vice Chair last year, this year, County Board Chair, and I feel like I've got the tools necessary to do a great job going forward. And that's why I would like to be re-elected.
Thank you, Raleigh. Bruce.
Good evening, and thank you for tuning in tonight to what will be a very interesting dialogue, I'm sure. I'm Bruce Shuck, a lifelong resident and retired farmer here in Candy Ojai County. I live in Arcana Township, where I spend most of my time with hobbies and running and golfing and doing some yard work. As a former County Commissioner, I consider myself a veteran at these debates. I've been very involved in several of them on the campaign trail, but that doesn't make me a professional by any means, so that's why I'm reading my statements tonight. As a Commissioner, I consider it to be one of the best jobs I ever had, mostly because I enjoy working with and being around people. I got off the County Board after I served eight years to get a real job before I turned 50. But over the years, working with farmers on ditch issues, I enjoyed working with landowners on rights of ways. I enjoyed working with families on head start issues. I enjoyed working with volunteers on emergency medical services boards. I enjoyed working with countywide recycling issues, and I enjoyed working with state and federal agencies on wetland issues, and also with our Congressman on transportation funding issues. As you have heard, I've wore many hats in my years as a County Board Member. I know the issues. I know how and where to go about getting things done. My experience gained in eight years is priceless, and I am ready to go back to work for you again as your County Commissioner. My current situation as a retired person allows me to dedicate as much time as meeting or an issue that it takes. I would consider it to be an honor to represent you once again as your District Three County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be rotating, or I will be rotating the questions, so that now Bruce just finished, so we'll start back up here with a question, just so that everybody gets a first crack at it and kind of a last crack at them. As I mentioned to all of you before we started, this is definitely a rural-urban mix, and so our questions are varied in both, as they refer to the city and also to some farming issues, but I think you'll find that the variety is good for this mix of candidates. So Steve, we will start with you first, and this question was from the audience. "Recently, Candy Ojai County implemented a half a percent sales tax, generating approximately $2.5 million annually for road improvements. Should the current wheelage tax be eliminated or reduced?"
If the sales tax raises the amount of revenue that they're anticipating, the wheelage tax could be reduced. I believe we're only at half of what the state allows us at this time, so we're not, you know, we're not overtaxing. There's only four counties, I think, in the state that are checking full mount. The wheelage tax is once per car, so it's in each vehicle, but if we can generate enough revenue without using the wheelage tax, that's better yet.
All right. Thank you. Dale H.
I guess, you know, we don't ever want to have too much money, and we want to be able to, you know, support our roads and do what we need to do. The only concern that I have about eliminating the wheelage tax is that, and this is a proactive look at things, is that we're going to start coming into more electric vehicles in the future, and we are not going to be able to get a lot of revenue off of them from a gas tax or any other way without having some sort of a tax on the vehicles. So that's my only concern about getting rid of the wheelage tax, is that we would get some money for our roads and stuff through that. But we don't want to over, you know, we don't want to overtake from our people either. We want to give them a chance to participate in improving our roads, but not abuse it either.
All righty. Dwayne.
One of the reasons I wanted to run for Commissioner is because I think we're overtaxed, and we should be eliminating a lot of those taxes by being more efficient and providing better service. That sounds like a good rhetorical start for everybody, I'm sure, but it's still a fact to a businessman, you always look to make things, get things done cheaper and better. And I think the wheelage tax, which is only one of three taxes that I know Mr. Nissen voted for in November and December of 2017, along with the half percent sales tax option, adds a lot of tax burden to a lot of people, always more, always more. Besides increasing our revenue to gather from the sales tax of about $2.5 million, in December, they also made the levy increase by another half a million dollars, virtually saying that's a $3 million increase in taxes for this year, about 10%. I don't know how many 10% years of increase in taxes we want to deal with here. The wheelage tax should never have been in place. It costs money to collect taxes also, and you have a small area of revenue with a lot of cost of collection. Doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. Raleigh.
Well, the sales tax was initiated in a well-thought-out manner because there's only four things you can do with roads. You can ignore the problem, you can put it on the property tax, you can use bonding, which means you have to pay back with interest through the levy, or you can do a half a percent sales tax. And that was the most reasonable of the four options we had. You can't do nothing, and when you adopt a sales tax, you have others other than just the property taxpayers paying for it. As far as the wheelage tax, I stated in the Tribune earlier this week that that could go away because we do have now this funding mechanism for our roads, which state funds and federal funds can only be used for certain projects, and that's important to know. The sales ta, the wheelage tax only raises about $400,000 a year, so it's really not do-all, end-all for our road stuff. It is nice to have that extra $400,000, but we've got now, I think, a handle on what we're going to do with the road construction funding through the sales tax, and I believe it was a good, good decision.
Thank you. Bruce.
Well, when I'm door-knocking the communities, I hear the same old thing on just about every doorstep, that we're being overtaxed, and I would agree. I think that one or the other is fine. I don't believe in both forms of taxes. In 1997, I believe, we put a sales tax on Candy Ojai County to build a library. We got a lot of opposition to that, but we did it anyway, and after two and a half years, about six months short of its sunset, we closed the tax because we'd raised enough money to build a library and do what that tax was set out to do. Now, if you're going to do a tax, let's get a sunset on it. Let's promise the citizens that here's what we want, here's what we need, when we get there, we'll stop it. So that's what I would do, and I would, I would support either dropping the wheelage tax or the half percent sales tax. We also face a few cities around the neighborhood that are going to add a half percent sales tax, and that could add a full 1% to purchases if you buy in specific towns and cities in the county.
Thank you, Bruce. Dale.
Well, I think the half percent sales tax was a great plan to put into effect to collect the monies that need to be used for strictly the roads and bridges. People coming into the community to shop and whatever from outside of our community are using our roads, and if we can collect some of the funds to keep them in good condition, it's a well-thought-out plan. The wheelage tax, yeah, that's, if that could be sunsetted, I think it'd be a great thing as well. It could be maybe construed as kind of a bad idea for maybe businesses that are coming into town to ship their goods and so on and so forth, they own their own fleets. We do have a lot of trucks rolling in and out of town for Jenny O., you know, with the different trucking companies hauling. Willmar Poultry, Farm Service Eller, all that's Willmar Logistics now, but the taxes added on to that for that $400,000, I guess, you know, that's good money to get, but if we can, if we can get it by the half percent sales tax, I think that's probably a good plan.
All right. And once again now, too, if you need me to repeat the question, I'll be happy to do so. Dale H., we will start with you. "Since the County Commissioners meet during weekdays, would you consider meeting in the evenings and/or Saturdays to encourage more public participation?"
That can be looked at. I can just use an example. We tried that with our Electric Co-op. We went to an evening meeting just to try and see if anybody was interested in coming to some meetings that we had that were open to the public, and we didn't see a lot of difference. I think it's good that if you are going to do an evening event, that you make it a big enough event so that people can come in and do it like a forum, so they can ask questions and stuff, and not maybe just the meeting itself. I think that it's nice to have a meeting in the morning when you're, when you've got clear thoughts and you're fresh and ready to work through out the meeting and not be rushed because you want to be home by 10 o'clock or 8 o'clock or something like that. So I think I like the morning meetings.
Dwayne.
I think an evening meeting would be a bad idea. Twice, twice a month during the day is adequate, should be adequate to take care of the business. One of the things that you see in Candy Ojai County, the county alone has over 100 committees, which your Commissioners get paid stipends to go and attend to or whatever costs they bear, and I think the 100 committees is pretty well takes care of every evening. I would like to see that number disappear. Committees are only useful if they come up with the agenda or the right attitude that you're asking them to find anyhow, and it's just crazy to think that in the county of Candy Ojai, we can have that many different committees and think we're being productive and functional and efficiently using our time. I would suggest that as far as the meeting itself goes, if I get elected, I think there'll be plenty of coverage. I would guess that a couple of the current Commissioners would get a little surprised by my appearance there after our past, and they would probably be willing to generate some good, good conversation.
Raleigh.
Okay. We meet during the weekdays for several reasons. It is not to eliminate public input. In fact, if we have something that's interesting enough, people do show up, as Dwayne knows. It's not, it's not to do that, it's because we meet with, first of all, we have a Health and Human Services meeting every, every, twice a month before the regular meeting, and we bring in our, some of our quasi-government folks from Woodland Centers or the Safe Avenues, and those folks are working, they have jobs, and they're showing up at our meetings on the clock, and so if we were to have them come at night, that would be a- And so if we were to have them come at night, that would be a, a problem for all of those folks. But, uh, I agree with the rest of us, the rest of these guys here, that it works very well, and if it's not broke, don't fix it. Don't, don't change it, I'm sorry.
Bruce?
This has been, uh, an issue that's come up even in my first campaign back in 1994, especially since we, we got the new office building and, and we had the ability to televise out there. But it, it's six of one, three and a half of the other. You know, we could have night meetings very easily. The staff that comes in during the evening, we all know what comp time is, they could do comp time the next day. We could certainly make it work. Uh, I think it's worth giving it a try. However, I think it should be done on trial basis. If, if it's poorly attended, I think we should go back to our afternoon meeting, or morning and afternoon meetings, but I'm not convinced either one of them is the way to go. I think, uh, the current situation is, is working well, but I'm open to, um, changing it as well.
All right, let's hear from someone from District One. How about Dale?
Well, excuse me. Um, I guess I'd think along Bruce and Raleigh's, um, ideas that, uh, you know, the morning meetings seem to be working fine, the way they're talking. Um, it would probably give you, you know, have committee meetings prior to, or, you know, the smaller group meetings before and maybe after where you'd be done with the official meeting. There'd also be daytime available to pursue some questions or work on some other items and so on and so forth, where, um, it might be a little easier to access the department heads or whomever you need to talk to, um, after, you know, after a meeting in the daytime. But like Bruce said, if, if people would, would like an evening meeting, it would be worthwhile, you know, giving it a shot and, and see how it's attended and so on and so forth, but yeah, gotta be flexible.
Thank you. Steve?
A lot of the points that brought up are, are very valid. You know, we do have people that are on a, a set schedule that, that need to attend, you know, the, the meetings, so it's easier for them to get here at the times when they're working instead of the evening. A lot of the committee meetings happen, you know, in, in the afternoons or evenings. So that would, but as far as personally, I, I have no, if the public would like to have it, you know, give us a try, I, I haven't got nothing against it. Um, you know, the fish play better in the morning anyhow, we could get more fishing done. But, uh, you know, it's, the idea of the supervisors being able to get here in, would be one of the biggest things I could see as a deterrent. And then if we can have a, a Rack Eight available to be taping them all, you know, people have, you know, it's after the fact, but they, they do get to see what's going on and schedule something coming up.
I just want to ask this question, I'd like you to take just a, a brief amount of time on it because we will run out of time with all the questions I have. How, if you're not going to change the time of your meetings for more of the public to come, what plans do you have for communicating and being in touch with your constituents? Steve?
Well...
Email, letter, you know, just something quick.
Yeah, the, I, I think attending city functions, you know, for my constituents are gathered here in town more often, you know, it's easier to get ahold of them, you know, at city meetings and, and around there. And, uh, you know, if we can get the, you know, get, get some coverage out of the paper, you know, that's, that helps. But, uh, to be sending out mailings all the time is, that's a cost prohibitive thing for the county. That's, I don't think we need to get to that.
Dale, Dwayne, Raleigh, Bruce, any?
I have one, get your car and drive around, talk to your constituents. Attend meetings, attend, uh, Lick Association meetings. You get a lot of information from these people. Uh, one of my, one of my greatest social events is door knocking. I love talking to people one-on-one on the doorstep. It's a great way to find out what's going on, what they're thinking. They're more bold to talk to you as well.
I agree with Bruce. I am having a great time going door-to-door and meeting with my constituents and finding out what they think. As far as the morning or evening meetings, the, the newspaper does publish the agenda ahead of time, and if something is interesting or the people are, are upset about, they will show up. And, uh, we, and Rack Eight does a good job of, of, and the newspapers, both the New London Paper, the Raymond, the Raymond Paper doesn't exist, the Kirkoen Paper, uh, they get the story out and, uh, people will let us know, believe me, and Bruce probably can, uh, we do hear about it.
I think being familiar to a lot of people in your district gives you the ability to correspond with them in whatever form it is, easy enough anyhow. I think most people have probably been familiar with, with myself, my family and all of those things, where we are and what we do. If you have a concern, it isn't going to be too hard to track a person down.
Dale, anything to add?
Yeah, absolutely. When, um, in my job that I currently am employed with, uh, you know, I deal with a lot of younger people, obviously, and the electronic media, texting and email is, is probably 90% of the communications I get with my clients and so on and so forth. Time spent on actually speaking on the phone is negligible, but, uh, we'd be available through any, whatever, you know, I, I'm, I'm used to all means and accept it all, so, yeah.
So we can expect you to still be door knocking after the election? One of you?
Absolutely.
Two of you, two of you. Next question, what is your vision for the county park system? And, um, I will be starting with Dwayne.
Yes. I think that the county park system is a huge asset for us, and the state park in Sibley is another huge asset, but I always have some ideas of how things can get better or more efficient. One of the things that I'm going to say in relation to that idea of the parks though is that our county is selling off all of its assets to DNR, Fish and Wildlife and all that, uh, at a regular basis. Everything that becomes county park or city or whatever ends the tax base that comes off of that property. And when we sell off property, uh, and we've sold a humongous amount of it over the last years, are allowed to wildlife institutes to take it over, we lose more tax base, more and more tax base. We lose more production in the area of other kinds, and, uh, we need to be able to use the park systems to get a balance for recreation and those kinds of purposes that are advantageous to our county without selling off our tax base or giving away our tax base every time the commissioners turn around.
Raleigh, what vision do you have?
Well, we're currently working on a parks plan to, to evaluate what we have, our assets, and what we might want to improve, and, uh, we're, we're talking to a couple of consultants, and we're going to come up with a plan that's going to look out into the future and see what needs we have. I don't know, Dwayne is talking about something completely different than what the question was. He's talking about wildlife, there's people coming in and buying land, farmland, whatever, outbidding farmers in some cases, and that's not what the question had anything to do with. And that we do get payment in lieu of taxes on those, so, uh, I think, uh, as far as the parks, they're a tremendous asset. I totally agree with him on that. And tourism is our number two, uh, asset in the, after agriculture in this county, and we need to be able to provide those services. And we need to look at what we're doing and, and make sure we can improve them so that people continue to come and spend money in our stores and in our restaurants and in our hotels, and, uh, so that's a critical thing.
Bruce?
I agree, our parks are very valuable to Candy High County. They draw in a huge amount of people and, and those people spend a lot of money here. While I was a county commissioner, we did several updates on parks. We put in pads on several of the parks. We made thousands and thousands of dollars worth of improvements. Back when it was very affordable. However, today it's getting really expensive to upgrade and, and add, uh, electric lines and, and pads for campers. The campers are getting bigger, more expensive, more elaborate, they draw more electricity. The demands on these older parks is huge. Um, and so I think we need to take our time moving forward on how we, um, improve the parks, but I think it's a plan that we need to look into. Um, one of the things that, um, I think we need to do is work with the city of Spicer to sell them Salisbury Beach. Salisbury Beach is a county park, and I don't think it belongs in the county. I think Salisbury Beach could be turned over to the city of Spicer. I think, uh, for a little bit of a rebut, uh, two questions ago, Dwayne raised the fact that there's 100 committees in Candy High County. There are 50 of them that are virtually, we don't meet on. Us commissioners that have, that are in and have been in know that, um, the Noxious Weed Committee only meets once a year, and that's whether it needs to or not.
Thank you. Uh, Dale, what about parks?
Well, I grew up, or I didn't grow up, but we brought, we brought up our son spending some weekends camping at, up at Green Lake and so on and so forth, and we just loved the time there. Um, and like Raleigh said, they are the number two revenue generator for the county is tourism. Um, it's a very important part. So, it's, it's just the way of life. It invites people to our county, it increases economics for the restaurants and stores and gas stations and, and, you know, everyone really will benefit from it. So, like Bruce said, we have to be careful with how we do the improvements and have it on some kind of a scheduled basis, because like he said, the, the campers that people come in with are a lot more elaborate than our little pop-up camper that we had many years ago. So, yeah, have, follow the plan that Raleigh had brought up, that their consultants are hopefully going to come up with something that's, that's feasible and economical and, uh, check it out and move forward from there.
Thank you. Stephen?
I, uh, I agree that the parks are extremely important to our tourism. I see some problems developing. Uh, right now we have 371 pads, I think is right, for the county parks. And we're ceiling, seeing those fill up by local residents. You know, they come out there and they park a giant fifth wheel out there all winter, all summer long, and they get a tax break. After end of 30 days, they don't pay sales tax anymore. You know, I don't understand why they, why they're not paying sales tax, you know, the whole season. And they fill up the parks and make it tougher for, you know, people coming in to our area. We'd like to get more people to come in, but it, we're filling them up with people from here, you know, and, uh, I think that's something that we have to take a look at. The, uh, the trails that they're developing, bike trails, bring more people in, and we need places for them to stay.
Dale H.
Well, living on Highway 71, you, I get to see a lot of campers fly by on Friday and they go back home on Sunday, and it's, it is amazing to watch how much revenue and how much tourism there is in this, in this area. Um, Sibley is a, is an amazing place for people that want to spend some time, and games like, I drive by down there quite often, and it is always full. Um, I know it costs a lot of money, um, but I, I just feel that we need to somehow make our park system and our, and our state parks and our county parks bigger because there is still potential for a lot of people that are looking for a camping spot. Um, if you want a spot, you have to be in there or pay for it by Tuesday, or you don't get in for the weekend. Um, I think it's a, kind of a crucial issue that we need to be looking at, that we need to improve the, the amount of spaces that we have for people to come into our area. Because like Bruce said, they do spend a lot of money. They go to grocery stores and buy food, they don't bring it all with them, so it's a revenue enhancing thing for the county, but we need to make room for all these people that enjoy vacationing in our wonderful county.
Thank you. Now we'll start with Raleigh. What plans do you have to address the growing mental health issues in the county jail population? Would you consider hiring mental health social workers to work in the jail?
Well, we, we struggle with that, with, at Woodland Centers where I'm, just became a board member a year ago. Uh, the help, finding adequate help even there is difficult. It, it would be nice to have somebody at the jail too, but we can't even staff Woodland Centers adequately, and, uh, we need, we need to look at vocational training, we need to look at, uh, um, folks coming in, uh, that are still studying college and maybe doing some internships at some of these places. We've talked about a lot of these things at Woodland Centers, and, and certainly the jail is, they shouldn't be in the jail. We need to make sure that these folks are where they ought to be and getting the care they need to have. And, uh, and just putting a couple of people over at the jail might temporarily work, but it, but we shouldn't, they shouldn't be in the jail in the first place. They should be where they need to be and getting the care they need to have.
Bruce, your thoughts?
Back in 1997, when we, Howard Christensen and I and Kenny Nielsen and a few others decided that we were going to bite the bullet and build a jail, and, um, little did we know that when we built a 150-bed jail, that several of those beds would be occupied by that sort of population. And to me, it's an unfunded mandate. Close the state hospital, and now we have these people as prisoners in our jail, which seems kind of ironic, but it's sad. But it's an unfunded mandate that the state has sent down to the, to the county. They, they're leaving it us, up to us to take care of them. And they certainly don't belong in jail. And if it's a, if it's hiring, um, uh, people to tend to that population, it's a direct burden on the county taxpayer, which, which isn't fair.
Dale L.
Yeah, it's, like Bruce said, it's real, it's a real tough thing to, to try to figure out. And it's, and it's, you know, the safety of those people is, would be priority, you know, that they would be, be, you know, take care of their own safety as well as, you know, so on and so forth. I, I don't know what kind of crimes they might have committed, I guess it doesn't matter, but, um, it just, I don't even know how to answer something like this. It's, it's a tough thing to have to deal with. It's a sad situation, like Bruce said, that there's, uh, you know, the state hospital had closed, or there isn't some kind of facilities that could help these people instead of putting them in jail. Yeah, um, it's, it's just, it's a hard one, that would really have to take some hard, long looks at.
Steve?
Well, it's a, a subject that I'm quite familiar with. I, as a booking officer out at the jail, I watch those people daily, and we're not doing them any good. They, um, part of the problem is in our court system. You know, they're sending people to jail that are mentally incompetent on misdemeanor charges, and no good comes to those people out there. They get no help, they, they get worse, and the state law says that it, once they're committed, they have 48 hours to, to move them out of there, but they can't because there's no beds to move them to. So they stay out there month after month after month. And it, it costs the, the state or the, the county over $18,000 a year to house, house them out there, and they would give them no help. And if we could get some, some people out there to help, you know, to take care of them and get them some of the stuff that they need, that'd be great. But what we really need is farther down the road. We need to find a place to get them to, you know, with the state hospitals closed, that, because you, you watch the, and, uh, you know, rice can only hand a, a few upstairs, and they can, they can't hand anybody that's, that, that's violent. And so they, so the jail gets them. And they have to be, uh, single cell and no contact with, with other people. It's, it's a terrible thing.
Dale H.
Well, I, I agree with everybody's comments, I guess. The one thing that I think is, you know, we can't, we need to get them to a different facility. I mean, we don't want to leave them in the jails, and that's, that's a cost, and that's something that I think is going to either have to be a state legislative thing accomplished or, or something from higher than the county. I don't think we have the ability to, to come up with that facility. But I think, you know, as your question stated, should we have somebody there to help? Yeah, I think if we do have to have them in the jail system, then they do need help because all they're being done with now is just put in a cell, and they have no idea what they're supposed to be doing. If they're in that state of mind, they get really confused and they, and they don't understand what's going on with them. So, I think if we have the opportunity to, to give them help out there, we should, we should pursue that because at least we're helping as much as we can right now.
Thank you. Dwayne?
In an ideal world, we would prevent that problem from coming to, uh, the cells to the jails in the first place. In an ideal world, we'd have more preventive care to keep people from doing things to themselves and putting themselves into, without them being able to help themselves into such bad situations. I have no... I have no knowledge whatsoever of how these things are handled at the jail. I depend on a judge to make those decisions as to where somebody should be and how they should be handled. And we don't have an ideal world, so we are going to have to pay particular attention, more so in the mental health area, maybe than in the drug rehab area or something to that degree. I would lean more toward the mental health side of spending more dollars and being more effective where the problem occurs. But like I say, ideally, it would be to eliminate or decrease the amount of people that are in that situation to start with.
Thank you. Bruce, this question, and by the way, this will more than likely be our last question in order to give you time for your closing statements. Aquatic species. Is enough being done to protect Candy Ojai Lakes, particularly since we advertise the county motto as "Where the Lakes Begin"?
This has been an issue that's gotten worse and worse every year, and it started back in the early 2000s when I was on the board. Dennis Peterson led the rally to stop the zebra mussels back in the late 90s. I don't know what we can do, more than what we are doing. We're spending a lot of money cleaning boats and advertising and trying to get the word out that these things do spread, and I'm afraid that it's going to take a lot more money and a lot more education before we get to the bottom of it, and I'm not sure if we're going to stop it, frankly.
Dale L.
Yeah, it's just walking around Green Lake and seeing the boat lifts pulled up after the season and see the zebra mussels on their legs, and it's sad, you know? I mean, it's not like when we were kids, we could go wading in the water and not have to worry about cutting your foot. It's a real, you know, the DNR is doing, I don't know, as much as they possibly can. It's, the boat inspection has to continue. That's one of the things that is in process, that is being done. Hopefully, we have responsible boat owners that do follow the rules, cleaning them off, draining their live wells, draining the boats completely. I don't really know if biologists have figured out a way to eliminate the zebra mussels. They multiply very quickly. You know, they've done some work with some of the milfoils and things like that that can be managed, I think, somewhat better, but yeah, the big, the big bad one is that zebra muscle right now, and it's just, it's sad to see what it does.
Stephen, once again, I just want to remind you, is there anything that the county can do to help with that?
Right now, I don't think the county has enough money to stop it. It's nearly impossible to stop. The boats hold water inside the boat in the engines, you know, IO can have as much as four gallons. In order to drain all of that every time you went, you know, our money may be best spent trying to find a cure instead of finding out how to keep it from going from lake to lake, because all the money we've spent so far hasn't stopped it. It has barely retarded it. It's, you know, everything just progressively goes. And, you know, there's some of the scientists now, they're saying that the birds can carry it, you know, that we can't spray them down. They spread some of the small parcels, it's the same way they spread freshwater shrimp, you know, in the feathers. So I think that long-range, the cure is the only thing that's going to save us. I mean, we can, you know, we still have to put out education. We don't want people doing nothing, but in order, you know, if we think we're going to be able to stop it, I don't know that that's even possible.
Thank you. Dale H.
I guess I 100% agree with Steve. It is a very hard thing to stop when you've got the water movement and the animals and stuff. I guess if the county has anything that they can do, it's probably education. I still hear people say, well, it isn't going to come off from my boat. It isn't going to happen from my boat or from my motor. And I guess it's just a county thing, but it's probably our only thing that we can do is probably education. I think we need to figure out if we can, as a county, maybe go back to the legislature and say, you know, we need some funding for the cure. That's what you guys need to go after, instead of just the inspections and everything else that they're working so hard on. It's all important, but I think we have to come up with a cure, and we have to do a lot of education of letting people know that it's not just a simple, well, look around your boat and, oh, there's nothing on here, I'm okay. So I think there's a lot more to it than what people really realize.
Dwayne?
A cure would be nice. A county coming up with a cure is probably not going to happen. Encouraging it, yeah, we can do that. We talk a lot amongst people at the lake. My wife and I spend some time on Lake Andrew. We have a cottage there, and we really appreciate how these local lakes are as far as how they've been kept and worked with. But Mother Nature, especially from a farming perspective, we learned that Mother Nature is much, much stronger than we are, and especially when it comes to the billfold. She's got way more power than we do, and the county has done well to try to address it and recognize it. But if you have a river running from one lake to another lake, good luck with cleaning a boat. You know, this is just a natural way that the chain of lakes, the chain of everything is connected. If you can slow it down until you learn how to manage it, until you learn how to find the cure, and sometimes we even have the cure, but we're not allowed to use it because we're afraid it might impact something else, but I don't know that as a fact. If we can slow it down by what we're doing, that's great. We should keep on trying to do that. But the county is pretty hopeless in trying to overcome the big picture of the problems that it creates.
Raleigh?
AIS is a real serious problem, and there's been a lot of money thrown at it, and I agree with everyone, it's a difficult problem. There's a new type of disinfecting a boat that doesn't use water at all. It's heat or something that's supposed to be, but they keep trying to come up with different things. We get a lot of money from the state because we have a lot of excesses. That's how it's funded. But I agree that it's a struggle, and it isn't really, we have a lot of people looking at it. And we have, the Prairie Woods Environmental Learning Center has got a team of students that are going out and trying to identify issues. Starry stone words are a really big thing that could happen in our lakes. It's a nasty one. You can, you try to chop them out, you just create a whole bunch of more plants, because it's like you ladies who probably have taken a leaf off of a flower and put it in water. That's the way starry stone word, it regenerates itself from just the littlest piece. So yeah, it's a huge problem, and I agree. The cure, finding a cure is really the target, I think. But again, Mother Nature does, is Mother Nature.
Thank you, gentlemen. That was about half of the questions that we had. So we, yeah, exactly.
We're having fun.
So let's, well, you're certainly far more relaxed now than you were when we started. But let's begin with closing statements, and we'll start with District 3 first, because we started with District 1. So Dale H., your closing statement, please.
Okay. I'd like to thank everybody for participating in the forum. It's been very interesting. I just wanted to say that I feel that as a job, as a county commissioner, is to listen and then do what is best for the whole county. We need to listen to our own constituents in our district and be their voice, but then to go back and do what's best for the whole county, not just for our district. I think that's something that we need to keep in mind. Being on the board of the co-op, I've learned that you have to listen first, and then you can do action after that, and that's the important thing. I think we need to be a listener, going out to meetings and different organizations in the county, and then go back as a commissioner and act on that if possible. Your voice is always important as a person in our county, and that's what I feel is important, to be a good county commissioner. Thank you much.
Dwayne?
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting us tonight, and for running it this way. I think you did a real nice job. I feel much more comfortable now than I did when we started. I think one term is all that commissioner should feel he's obligated to fulfill if he runs. I would only be a one-term person. I wouldn't consider running again. I think if you can't get a job done in four years, you don't have much leadership. If you have people who think they learned how to be productive on this board, then they probably didn't have much vision to bring to the board in the first place. If I can be a commissioner in four years, you'll see some changes in attitudes and some changes in the way that things are evaluated, and I'm really looking forward to having that opportunity.
Thank you. Raleigh?
Well, thank you for having this meeting tonight, and I really appreciate having the opportunity to talk to you and the folks that will eventually watch this on TV. I believe that I've done a good job as a county commissioner the past three and a half years, including two years of leadership role as a vice chair and as the county board chair this year. With the support of the folks and the door-knocking I've been doing, I would like to continue my service to District 3. I'm proud of the work I've done. I've worked hard to be a good steward of tax dollars while ensuring that citizens' needs are addressed. And the experience I gained in my first term will provide the knowledge and leadership necessary to complete projects. Through thoughtful and complete information gathering, I always strive to make the best decisions possible for the benefit of my constituents and the county at large.
Thank you. Bruce?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for making this possible, and thank you to all the candidates here for putting in the time and to be a willing public servant. Many times, it's not as easy as you may think. You may have to like it, and you may have a burning desire to do it. Not everybody has that burning desire. But I have that burning desire, and I have what it takes, and I've proven that. You can vote for me and trust that I will be your voice when it comes to like issues like taxation, budgets, roads, and lakeshore issues, and land permitting issues. So make sure you do your duty as a Candy High County voter, and vote in August 14th, not August 4th, primary, and vote for me. Bruce Shuck, the man up here with the most experience for the next county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce, and thank you, District 3. Let's move to District 1, Dale L. Anderson.
Once again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for the forum this evening. It's been quite an experience, and I really appreciate the time you've put in to have it go forward. I feel I have the qualifications with my many years of, in the business field, with corporate business and small business and so on and so forth. I've dealt with every kind of potential customer that was thrown at me by a different employer, by the employer, but, and handled it very well. The responsibility of a commissioner is tremendous, and I've always been open to any suggestions. The communication lines are always open. I'm available to help out any way I can and answer any questions. I learn quick, and I would really, really love to serve the people of District 1. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and read Corky Berg, since we're doing alphabetical as well. As a third-generation resident, I have spent most of my professional life working and living in District 1. I have been very involved in our community my entire life and have proven leadership experience. I had experiences working closely with the county commissioners for several years, and I have developed the skills that will help me be effective in that position. Most of all, I have learned to do more with less and still provide excellent services to our citizen. I have proven experiences of being very mindful of our tax dollars and working, looking hard for the best options. It is important to work collaboratively, find win-win scenarios, and being respectful of others. I am very willing to learn and open to new ideas. The two E's I strongly believe in for government are efficiency and effectiveness. I will be diligent to see that Candy Ojai County remains a great regional center for business and a great place to live and raise a family. I am ready to work hard for you and, of course, would not think about going south for the winter. I care greatly about our county, our home, and have the skills, experience, and qualifications to represent you on the county board. It would be a privilege to represent you. Respectfully again, Corky Berg. Now, Stephen?
I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to participate in the debate tonight. Dale and I said we had so much fun, we're going to do this again in two weeks. Next week, we can't because of the fair, but, you know, we're going to do it again. I'd also like to thank the other candidates that are here and that the audience at home and watching and listening for taking the time to become involved in this operation. I realize a county commissioner is a position of tremendous local responsibility, and I'm willing to take the time to meet with the people and listen to the input of the community. Every voice counts, and I'd like to be the people's voice in District 1. We didn't agree on everything here tonight, but there's one thing that tied us all together and ignites us all, and that is the belief that the elections still work and that our citizens should decide our elections. Please remember to vote on August 14th, and if you choose to vote for me, that'd be great. I appreciate, I would appreciate your vote, and it would be an honor to serve.
Thank you, candidates, for participating in this forum, and to the audience here tonight. It's a beautiful summer night, and look at all the people here, so that is really something to be proud of. For those who may tune in to this later on, that would be on-demand for both RAC TV and KWL-M. Their support is very valuable to our community, and we appreciate their work. Thank you to the support of the League of Women Voter members that are here tonight. Our next forum for this primary season will be next Thursday, March 9th, and we will begin at 6:30, excuse me, August 9th. We will begin at 6:30, and we will hear the candidates running for mayor of the city of Wilmer. And then following that presentation later that evening at 7:45, we will have the sheriff's candidates as our guests. Thank you again. Please remember to vote, as many of our candidates have said, at your usual polling place, and you can still do early voting up until August 13th at the auditor's office on Benson Avenue. Thank you and good night.